Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Councilmember Cottinello is excused. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for the executive minutes of April 13th, 2015.
Second.
Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And a motion for the regular minutes of April 13th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome all. A nice crowd for this evening, dodging the storms out there. Just as a form of welcome, and I just want to talk about or share my week before last, which was a good reminder what Madison is all about and what a special town we have. At our council meeting two weeks ago, we did have, we had a moment of silence for Bob Beeman, who was a good friend of mine, kind of honorary brother to my friend John Kennedy. John and I were in kindergarten together at St. Vincent's School. So when I was talking to John at the viewing, he was pointing out that Bob Beeman gave 22,000 hours of volunteer service to the Scouts over his time. And that is working. Thursday, at lunch, was a Rotary meeting. And you know, as you know, or you may know, Rotary's motto is "Service Above Self." The speaker that day was Maggie Doing, who is 28 years old, not a Madison resident, but is certainly an inspiration. And the fact that she was talking to Rotary Club says a lot about our residents and our local Rotary Club. Maggie, at age 19, was taking a gap year before heading off to college. Went to India, ended up going to Nepal, came across a young child who had lost her family and figured, "I can't let this go. What can I do?" She found out for $17, she could send this young child to school, but she knew that was just a short-term solution. Maggie, to the long story short, called or wired home and said, "Please send my life savings of babysitting money, $5,000. I need to take care of children in Nepal." So now, at age 28, she runs a school for over 300 students. She has personally adopted 51 children without parents and is raising them. And that certainly sets a tone, and that was our speaker, talking about going above and beyond. And I don't think mayors are allowed to give homework assignments, but your assignment is to go to blinknow.org and look up that story. Then, Thursday afternoon, I went to another memorial service. Benjamin Tex Logan, longtime Madison resident, and if you look him up in Wikipedia, you'll learn about, he was electrical engineer, a mathematic genius, worked with Bell Labs for many years, known throughout this country for his work with Bell Labs, but even better known as a world-renowned fiddler, that right in our midst, a quiet star of Madison, Tex Logan. And if you know the Christmas song, "Christmas Time Is Coming," look up the composer, and that was Tex Logan. So a star, like many people, quietly living as our neighbors. Thursday evening was off to Drew University to listen to Leon Panetta. A little reminder of the great resource we have by being a university town, what concerts, lectures, the livelihood they give to our downtown. But the other thing that was, we hear often in Madison, is a call to service. As Leon Panetta talked about, he would love to see every young adult in this country doing two years of service in exchange for support for college. And then, of course, you end up this great week on May Day, where we see almost close to 1,000 volunteers giving their time, making our town beautiful, and we recognize Arbor Day on an annual basis, as we take care of the trees and our environment. So that is what Madison is all about: giving, supporting, and learning. So it's one of the reasons I love being up here and being part of this town. Shifting gears, the employee of the month for May is Zach Ellis, Recreation Director. For his work with special needs adults with the Morris Pride Facility, his recruitment of some of the Pride adults to volunteer at the MRC to pick up litter and clean the facility benefits both Pride and adults, and those who get outside become involved and also serves the borough very well. And as you know, that we have, talking about giving and supporting others, that since the days after Sandy, when we partnered with Union Beach to help that town that's devastated, we are still supporting them, and we are into year three of the camp program and trying to send children from Union Beach that have not, still have not returned to their homes, to give them experience of summer camp. We received a thank you note just the other day, and I'll take out the names, but quickly, here's the note. "My girls participate in last year's camp program. They went to Spears Algebar for two weeks. They are still talking about what they did and who they met and how much fun they had. I can't talk about this experience without crying. My one daughter is autistic. The staff at camp were wonderful and placed her in a cabin with her typical peers, but assigned her a special needs counselor. The girls were in the same cabin, on opposite sides, so they had the comfort of one another while also being independent. The experience helped teach my daughter about self-reliance and helped her with her own care. My other daughter got to be a typical child without having to deal with the daily struggles of being stuck in the middle of two autistic sisters. My four-year-old is also autistic. The counselors adored her as she them. I can't thank you enough for giving them both an amazing opportunity. Everyone responsible for the Madison-sponsored campership program, thank you so much for your hard work to make this opportunity possible for all our kids. It really has meant the world to my two girls. It's nice to see we are making a difference." And the library report. The library is pleased to announce two local, the, ooh, let me start again. The library is pleased to announce new local history service that is available to the public. Two computers, the Adult Services Department now offer Digitized Madison Eagle newspaper. This is a wonderful way to research family history, town events, Madison sites, et cetera. At the present time, the newspapers from late 19th century to 1983, as well as 2010 to mid-2013 are digitized and available for research. Included are the Madison Eye Opener and Madison Journal published in 1877 to 1882, preceding the Madison Eagle. The library is continuing the digitized project, so in coming months, the entire run of Madison's local papers will be available for research at the library, which is a great addition. This project has been funded through a request from Larry Tabor, longtime Madison resident and town historian. We also appreciate the cooperation, support received by, from Liz Parker, Madison Eagle's executive editor and publisher. And the librarians will be ready to help out on, to help you with your research. And I do have a host of proclamations today. Do two from here and then come on down. It's, now winter seems like a distant memory at this point, and we're enjoying the beautiful sun and being outdoors, but it's a good reminder that May is skin cancer awareness month. So, skin cancer, most common form of cancer in the United States, affecting 5 million individuals each year, with 1 in 5 Americans developing skin cancer in the course of their lifetime, 1 in 50 developing melanoma. Melanoma, the third most common form of skin cancer and the deadliest skin cancer, is one of the most common cancers for young adults, and it's on the rise nationwide and worldwide, and accounts for more than 80,000 cases of skin cancer in 2015. Recent studies indicate that sun damage in childhood can lead to skin cancer later in life, and rates of sunburn remain high, affecting nearly 37 percent of Americans each year as a result of overexposure to the UV rays. In the past 33 years, more people have been diagnosed with skin cancer than all other cancers combined, and more women are diagnosed with melanoma before age 45, but by age 60, the rate is even two times higher than men, and by age 80, the rate in men is nearly three times higher than women. And overall deaths from all cancers has decreased in the past three years, but the incidence of all cancers continue to increase by 4 percent with the rise of, with the rise in melanomas of the skin, especially in the Morris and Somerset County areas. So now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim May 2015 as Skin Cancer Awareness Month to help save lives, raise awareness of skin cancer, and urge all residents to talk with family and friends about the importance of early detection and prevention, of measures to educate ourselves and others about this disease, and how to offer compassion and understanding to people living with cancer And we had a proclamation which I read at the, at May Day and Arbor Day celebration. I won't read the whole thing right now, but I, this came from both the Senate and General Assembly through the work of our representative Senator Cody and Assemblyman McKeon, Assemblyman J.C., and basically recognizing the great volunteer effort that Madison puts forward every year on May Day. Just trying to capture the, I'll read the last paragraph. "It is both fitting and proper that the members of this legislature pause in their deliberations, appraise the Madison Downtown Development Commission and the May Day in Madison, Madison Committees' May Day Celebration, and therefore be resolved by the Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature joins in celebrating May Day and urges all citizens to continue their efforts to create a cleaner and safer world for themselves and their neighbors." So we appreciate our team in Trenton and the recognition, and thank all those who worked so hard on May Day. It looks beautiful out there. How many people were in downtown Madison close to noon this Saturday? Got a few hands out there. To see the great bicyclists go through town, recognizing the police who have given their lives for our country, and this is a proclamation for National Police Week, and appreciation not only of our police force, but those across this country who put their lives out for us. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Madison Police Department, and whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries, and whereas, since the first recorded death in 17,000 law enforcement officers, the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund 27th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2015, which is part of National Police Week. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and United States flags shall be flown at half-staff. Now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, proclaim May 10th through 16th, 2015 as Police Week in Borough of Madison and publicly salute the service of law officers, law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Very honored to accept this proclamation by the mayor, council, and governing body. I had the pleasure on Saturday to stand in the center of town with the fellow master police officers, Chief Thadgson, and several members of the council, and cheer on the police unity tour officers, as well as three of our own police officers who are participating in a national law enforcement memorial, probably cycling their way into Washington, D.C. right now. Those officers are doing a very honorable, credible thing for all the fallen officers. The National Law Enforcement Memorial recognizes officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty, serving our citizens and our communities. This year alone, we have lost 44 officers to gun battle and other incidents in the course of their duties. Last year, 127 police officers in the United States lost their lives serving our citizens. I had the pleasure of accepting this award, and thank you very much.
I think we have a few young playwrights in the audience. Playwrights Theater, please step forward, any of our young playwrights, come on up. This sounds like the way I approached my homework in high school, but that's another story. So this is proclaiming April 2015 as Madison Young Playwrights Month. Whereas, Playwrights Theater, founded in 1986, has nurtured creative writing skills for all ages through the New Jersey Writers Project co-sponsored program of the New Jersey State Council on the Arts and Department of State. And whereas, Playwrights Theater has produced performances and offered new plays to a local and statewide audience as a result of its dedication to prospective playwrights. And whereas, Playwrights Theater brings a unique program to the community through its local in-school playwriting initiative, the Madison Young Playwrights Program. And whereas, Playwrights Theater will present performances of student-written work during in-school assemblies presented this spring. And whereas, Playwrights Theater has continually received positive response from students, teachers, and parents for the effectiveness in working with all students, many of whom have realized the benefits of self-discovery and expression through playwright, playwriting. So now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim April 2015 Madison Young Playwrights Month. You can change your calendars now. In so doing, so I extend the very best wishes to the Playwrights Theater and to all young writers within our community for continued growth and success. Further, I encourage the public's participation in celebrating and commending our young playwrights for their creativity, artistry, and expression. So, well done.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Jim DeVivo. I'm the Director of Education for Playwrights Theater. Just wanted to say that, you know, we believe that at the core of an effective education system are the arts. While it is easy to see arts for its immediate entertainment value, we must not overlook its greater impact as an educational tool. As the Roman playwright, excuse me, the Roman philosopher Horace believed, art is, effective art is both dulce et utile, sweet and useful, or to put it another way, entertaining and educational. So in recognizing these playwrights here tonight, we not only celebrate their achievement, but also encourage their curiosity to learn more about the world and about themselves, and how those two things may interact. We're currently wrapping up the celebration of the 29th Annual Madison Young Playwrights Program with our final in-school assembly at St. Vincent Martyr School on May 27th. However, three plays written by students here today will also be performed at the 2015 New Jersey Young Playwrights Festival on June 1st at the Fairleigh Dickinson University Campus, in a program where we present 10 plays from across the state. The plays by Artha Abasingi, Francesca Wan, and Josephine Walker will also be presented there as well. So congratulations to them. We had a number of other. We're always overjoyed to see what they're thinking, what they're imagining, and in all of this, we encourage you to continue doing that for many, many years to come. Thank you, Mayor Conley. Thank you, council, for recognizing them and for encouraging them, as well as all of you. It doesn't happen without any of us here. Thank you so much.
Now, before you sit down, we're going to get you, give you a chance to perform here, I want you to tell us your name, your school, and the name of your play.
I'm Grace Randall. My school is MJS, and the name of my play, mine was called "The Dream." My name is Francesca Wan, and I'm at St. Vincent Martyr School, and my, my story is about storming a car.
My name is Kenee Collins. My school is St. Vincent Martyr, and my play was...
Go ahead.
Yep, that's alright. It comes to you. Yep.
My name is Kira Collins, and I go to St. Vincent Martyr School, and the name of my play was "A Twist on Christmas."
My name is Artha Abasingi, and I go to Torrey de Sabatini, and my, my play is "Sibling Rafferty."
My name is Josephine Walker. I go to Torrey de Sabatini, and the name of my play is "Stitches Dun Dun Dun."
My name is Gianna Izzo, and I go to Central Avenue School, and the name of my play is "Only Human."
My name is Caitlin Angler, and I go to Central Avenue School, and the name of my play is "Trouble with Reading."
My name is Natalia Arena, and I go to Kings Road School, and the name of my play is "The Story That Changed Everything."
My name is Sophia De Palo, and I go to Kings Road School, and the name of my story is "The Three-Pointer."
My name is Samantha Pabockren. I go to Central Avenue School, and the name of my play is "Fully Flaged."
And while we're on the topic of student achievement, we have a very proud moment. I want to call Monica Young, and Bob, if you're going to, you can come on up, or if you can stay back to take pictures, wherever you want to be. All right, you got the camera in hand. So we are very proud of, proud of you. Just, I'll, I'll read this in a second, but she, Monica Young of Madison, longtime Madison resident, has achieved something only 1,000 out of 1.5 million high school juniors achieved, and those are the ones that applied. There's far more students out of that. If you do the math, which if I think I've done it right, it is 67, one thousandths of a percent achievement that you have achieved here, and we are very proud of what you have done. So the mayor and council hereby congratulate Madison High School senior Monica A. Young for achievement for being named National Merit Scholarship Award winner. This accomplishment required extraordinary effort, dedication, and perseverance. Monica was one of approximately 1,000 distinguished recipients awarded this honor out of over 1.5 million high school juniors entered in the 2015 competition. Monica was selected for the National Merit Moody's Scholarship sponsored by the Moody's Foundation. We commend Monica for her commitment in reaching this goal. The achievement of this outstanding scholar has brought great pride to the Borough of Madison. In testimony of our appreciation, I have hereon to set the official seal of the Borough of Madison. Congratulations, Monica. And one last presentation. We have both of our Shade Tree Management Board here and Friends of Madison Shade Trees, so please come forward. Come on up. So for those that are able to be here on the first Saturday in May every year, you see our great Arbor Day celebration, where we recognize a great work that we do here in Madison as organized work and also as residents by planting trees. But this year was extra special because we reached a milestone, and that was 30 years of being named Tree City. So let me read this, and we've got some presentations here in a second. Whereas, the Shade Tree Management Board, created in 2001, encourages arbor cultural, and manages, this selection, I have trouble with multi-syllabic words, planting and care of shade and ornamental trees and shrubbery upon the streets and public spaces of Madison. And whereas, developing and maintaining a community forestry management plan is in compliance of New York Shade Tree and Community Forestry Assistance Act is also undertaken by the Shade Tree Management Board. And whereas, the Friends of the Madison Shade Trees, a nonprofit organization created in 1989, is committed to planting trees on public properties and supplementing the Shade Tree Management Board through donations from residents and businesses and fundraising and grant awards. And whereas, the efforts of these volunteers ensure beauty, beautiful and healthy trees throughout the Borough of Madison, which increases property values, enhances the economic vitality of business areas, and beautifies our community. And whereas, the successful efforts of these dedicated volunteers evidenced by the Borough of Madison being recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 30 consecutive years, receive in its eighth Tree City USA Growth Award in recognition of environmental improvements and achievement of higher levels of tree care. Now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby extend thanks and appreciation to the members of the Shade Tree Management Board and Friends of the Madison Shade Trees for their efforts and dedication and commitment to the borough. So we have one each for our Shade Tree Manage Board and Friends, so who wants to accept that on behalf of the Friends and your great leadership there? And Shade Tree men? And what we... And what we receive... The flag, Arbor Day Packers, Tree City USA, Arbor Day Foundation. Thirty years, so thank you for making this town so great. We'll give a few minutes for the, you are welcome to stay. There's no extra charge for... Okay, reports from the committees, Community Affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Okay, senior citizen members Kay Leary, Sandy Faiello, Peggy Donley, and Kay Schaler were on hand at the last Borough Council meeting to receive the 2015 Leading the Way plaque from the Downtown Development Commission for their efforts during the 2014 May Day cleanup. This recognition was greatly appreciated, as is the pleasure of seeing the improvement to Civic Center grounds on Monday morning. The Drew Crew and Small, that's all, did their usual great job of weeding, trimming, and mulching. And tomorrow, Patrolman Chad Ripka will be at the Senior Center presenting a program on frauds and scams that was well received by the Advisory Committee. There have been several reports here of attempted scams in Madison, grandchild in need, IRS payment demands, misaddressed package, so the program will help spread the word about safety.
Okay, senior citizen members Kay Leary, Sandy Faiello, Peggy Donley, and Kay Schaler were on hand at the last Borough Council meeting to receive the 2015 Leading the Way plaque from the Downtown Development Commission for their efforts during the 2014 May Day cleanup. This recognition was greatly appreciated, as is the pleasure of seeing the improvement to Civic Center grounds on Monday morning. The Drew Crew and Small, that's all, did their usual great job of weeding, trimming, and mulching. And tomorrow, Patrolman Chad Ripka will be at the Senior Center presenting a program on frauds and scams that was well received by the Advisory Committee. There have been several reports here of attempted scams in Madison. Grandchild in need, IRS payment demands, misaddressed package. So the program will help spread the word about safety. And from the DDC, Madison Matters Newsletter is out. The first edition I received in the, as an email, it's on the RoseNet. It is a terrific document, and I hope all of you take a look at it and sign up to receive it. And once again, the weather cooperated for May Day. It was a gorgeous day to clean up, spread some mulch, and share in the great spirit of the Madison community. And there are many people to thank for making this May Day 2015 such a wonderful success. We had nearly 1,000 volunteers. And in addition, we had the financial support of 70 sponsors and many generous individuals who made contributions, and the support of many businesses who donated goods and services to the event. May Day in Madison is truly a unique event that sets Madison apart, and I thank everyone who participated. The DDC Arts Alliance Sidewalk Gallery banners will be going up downtown in the next few weeks. Once again, there are many amazing works of art, so please check them out. And the Farmer's Market will be open Thursday, June 4th, in its new location on Central Avenue between Main Street and Cook Avenue. The hours will be from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The market is going to feature new vendors and expanded event programming in addition to the return of all the favorite vendors. And the DDC is also working with the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts to expand the Friday Nights concert series for this summer. And then I, a report for Mr. Catalinello, the police report. The number-one thing is Madison was named one of the safest 100 communities in America. Madison launched a home/business security survey program, which is becoming very popular. We now have a new CAD-RMS server installed in preparation for new dispatch and records management system. We have a new Carfax service initiated, which will assist citizens with crash report retrieval and provides enhanced motor vehicle data to assist detectives with investigations. And congratulations to Patrolman Boone. He was injured during the winter, and he is now back to light duty. And we also received $4,000 for the Click It or Ticket grant. That is it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Water Department has been very busy because this is the time of the year that all the streets are going to be milled and paved. So that means that they have to be out there locating and marking underground utilities. So they've done 76 of those in the past couple of weeks. They're also helping PSENG on the reconstruction of Ridge Dale Avenue that required marking out the water utilities for the entire length of Ridge Dale Avenue from Oxford to Burnett Road. Then they had 37 requests for locating utilities for borough tree plantings. Two new constructed houses needed new meter settings and outside registers. They put in five curb boxes that were checked, and water was turned off and on for inside plumbing. Three curb box tops were replaced or repaired. They installed a two-inch meter on 39 Green Village Road for the new multifamily apartment building that, when I do my electric report, they're moving very steadily along on that project. The Water Department Act informant had an onsite review of interworkings of the water system with a consultant that we have hired, Jim Lengel. They did test inspection of interconnect with Southeast Morris at Madison Avenue, Kitchell Road, for possible metering. They put in four new fire hydrants that were previously installed on roads that have since been reconstructions, where they were refurbished and restocked for installation. The start of hydrant flushing has begun with the hydrants in the Sun Pike Road area. So if you see water running out of them, don't get frightened. They're supposed to do them every year. Air filters for both A and B Treatment Plant and D Well Treatment were replaced. A hydrant was replaced in the Madison Commons Complex. Nine meters were replaced there for due-to-age leaks or outside register installations. Niles Park Fountain was repaired because it had been vandalized, unfortunately. Main Val Box on Madison Avenue was repaired and replaced. And they worked, they had a confined space entry that was made by the Water Department personnel to assist a telecommution, PCS at the Madison Avenue tank site to install the new radio transducer. Static water levels at each well were taken as needed quarterly by the state. Levels were comparable to last year, last quarter's levels, which is very good. Emergency generators were run and tested. From the Electric Department, the crews all completed their confined space training course. They installed new poles on Norman Circle, Woodland Road, Barnesdale, Police Firing Range, and the Cook Avenue parking lot. And they replaced a faulty transformer on Chateau Tier as well. And they, on a regular basis, they perform line clearance, service upgrades and removals, and mark out requests.
Very much. And Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, the Board of Education budget increase and the levy with that service is 5.2 percent, not the 3.9 percent as previously announced. The total coming from Madison taxpayers is approximately $40.4 million for the 2015 school year. The auditor's in the process of completing their fieldwork for the 2014 audit and should be wrapping up that process at Hartley Dodge by Wednesday of this week. And finally, we have 42 tax appeals pending with the Morris County Board of Taxation, which will be heard on May 26th. We currently have about $543,000 in our tax appeal reserve account. We don't anticipate any significant impact. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to announce another adult health screening that will be offered by our Health Department. On Thursday, June 11th, there will be a clinic on heart health beginning at 8:00 a.m. This screening will include a comprehensive metabolic profile blood analysis. Included will be blood pressure checks, information on cholesterol and diet, fitness, and preventing osteoporosis. This analysis will also include total cholesterol, HDL, and LDL, in addition to other blood components. Yes, they will be drawing blood. Also, the Madison Health Department is teaming up with the Madison Wise Diabetes Prevention Program. There will be a staff person present at the clinic to discuss this new program and how to conduct diabetes risk assessment. If you're interested in attending, please contact the Health Department because registration is required. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from Public Works, the department has planted over 50 trees for the Shade Tree Commission, and they continue their work on road and sign repairs. The Sewer Department has been working with the road crew on manhole and catch basin replacements and rebuild in preparation for the mill and overlay project work that's going to happen in the next couple of weeks. They've also cleaned out over a mile and a half of sewer lines. And from the Engineering Department, the Ridge Dale Avenue bid project opening is scheduled for this Thursday, May 14th, at 10:00 a.m. Public Service has been, started its gas main replacement work on Ridge Dale in advance of the municipal road construction work planned for this summer. The six mill and overlay projects are scheduled for completion next week using Tilkam paving and Denville line striping. The roads include Morris Place, Danforth Road, Sherwood Ave, Longview, Candlewood, and Fox Chase Road. The Police Department has been putting out, or will be putting out stalkers to let everybody know this is happening. And I believe there'll also be next alerts going out as the roads are being shut down for work. The second informational public meeting to discuss the proposed Morris County Central Ave modifications was also held last Friday, and the Complete Streets Committee meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. For the Library, the bid opening for the HVAC replacement system, ceiling, and lighting repairs at the Public Library took place on Thursday, April 23rd. The second round of bids is still above the appropriated funds, and therefore tonight, there has been a recommendation that we reject all the bids. Local public contract law allows the municipality to enter negotiations for a more favorable contract in order to complete the award, and we'll be working on that over the next month. For Hartley Dodge Memorial, the Review Committee for the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust Fund is expected to tour the east wing of the building this Wednesday prior to making any recommendations for our grant funding request. And finally, the 2015 sewer main lining construction bid is anticipated to be advertised this week. That's it, and thank you.
Thank you. Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
All right, we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is the one that is limited to our items on agenda discussions or resolutions. Any comments related to ordinances must be held off until the hearing for each of the ordinances, or can be commented on our second round later in the meeting. So anyone wishing to comment on our agenda discussions, which includes a brick paver project at James Park for veterans, a discussion on a resolution urging Congress to change laws related to community development block grant funding, and a strategic planning update. Anyone wishing to comment, those items are in resolutions. Please step forward, state your name or address, and state the topic you are going to be discussing. Seeing that, I close this part of the meeting and move on to our agenda discussions. And Mayor Dunn, welcome, and step up to lectern and share your project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jack Dunn, Kensington Road. I represent a group of Madisonians who are seeking council approval to remove the existing blacktop and replace it with engraved pavers at the Lower James Park, where the Eagle 1/11 memorial is, and also the 9/11 memorial. Our plan is to use engraved pavers with the names of a military veteran, living or deceased. The pavers are four-by-eight. They're environment-friendly and lifetime guarantee. They're the same color as the granite, which the Eagle sits on. And we will have them epoxy-filled, so they will not accumulate dirt, snow, ice, or whatever. And it will be a black epoxy, which will highlight the pavers. The cost will be funded by any veteran or individual who wishes to honor a veteran through the purchase of a paver. The cost for each paver will be $75. And this is, we are basically saying, if you are a military veteran, living or deceased, we welcome your name on there. If you are a veteran who lives or has lived in the Madison, or a resident, past or present, who wishes to honor a family member, or any veteran can do so by purchasing a paver. The theme of the project is "Walk With Us." And an appropriate engraving, either brass or paver, depending on the amount of funds we raise, which we are hoping to raise $30,000 for this project, will be placed in the walkway with the following inscription. "Our footsteps were heard around the world. We are the few of the many who served our nation with honor, pride, and dignity. Please walk with us." We will follow the existing pathway that is there now, with the exception of where the ceremonies are held in front of the Eagle, both on Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We're going to enlarge that slightly to give the people who are running these ceremonies, as you know, you've all been there, you know they're stepping in the bushes, they're stepping in the mud. So we'll expand that just a little bit to make that more appropriate. I would just like to note that when I was the mayor, Tony DeRosa and I started a Veterans Registration Book, and it was in, started in 2002, and it ran up until 2008. It was at the lobby of the Hartley Dodge, and it's been removed. But during that period of time, over 2,125 veterans were registered in that book. And venture to say, the amount of veterans that may live or have lived in town has probably doubled. So it's an appropriate project, and we're very proud of it, and we hope we can meet our goal. So with the, this project is Madison's way of honoring and remembering the men and women who gave so much to preserve our freedoms. I just want to note also that tomorrow I'll be meeting with David Mayne, Superintendent of Public Works, and I will be working with him, if the council approves this project, as we progress day by day. We will not start anything at this project until the necessary funds to complete it are collected. And the, our work is being done by a local contractor called Yello Brothers, and all of the business transactions, with the exception of the engraver, will be done through Madison's businesses. And with this body's permission, we are ready to go and start collecting money. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I think this is a great project.
Thank you.
About how many pavers will there be available? And then how do I go about, let's say if I wanted to purchase one, how would I go about doing that?
Okay, we have applications that, I've already asked the mayor if we could have some applications at Borough Hall. We're anticipating putting into various businesses throughout town. And my family is going to bombard the internet with applications, with all their friends on the, I'm sure we'll get the word out. We anticipate putting out flyers on Memorial Day, and this is why I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight, so we can get ready for Memorial Day. And I think it's an opportunity to reach a couple thousand people, and I am sure we will make this. The paver itself will contain the name of the veteran and also his branch of service. You have 15 characters per line. It'll be three lines, so there's ample room for someone with a very long name and a very long service. So the, how they're going to be available, I think you got a copy of one in your package, I would hope. But that's what they will look like, and they'll be available throughout town. And my wife is going to be the treasurer, she always is. And if someone needs one, they can call my home, and I will see that it's mailed to you, that you'll get it, if by chance you don't run across one.
And we can put electronic version on RoseNet, certainly, and then possibility of utility insert, assuming...
If we can sell 400, which is really only 10% of probably what we have, we can meet our goal. And of course, we will accept donations to a lot of people, money they want to throw around. Some of us.
Any other questions, or we're all, we just a voice vote, all in favor of proceeding with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you much.
So we're good. Jack, thank you for your work on this. It'll be a great improvement to the park, as you showed.
Absolutely, yes. Good luck, officer. Yep.
Very nice. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Jack.
Community Development Block Grant and Veterans Organizations, which is a great follow-up onto Carmel.
Which is a great follow-up, is right, yeah. This resolution is Resolution 145, 2015, that we hope everybody will support tonight. Resolution of the Borough of Madison urging Congress to change federal law to ensure that the veterans organizations are eligible for CDBG funding. Apparently now, there is, there is a problem with veterans associations, like VFWs and American Legions and local posts, that provide a lot of good services to either the veterans across the United States, in financial assistance, homeless outreach, and sometimes a lot of our VFWs and American Legions act as warming centers. So they are a good part of a community. Well, we got a very nice letter from Assemblyman Buco, who was quite concerned, and he asked us if we would pass this resolution because at this time, that there's a recent interpretation by HUD regarding its federal regulations, that they will no longer consider veterans as a presumed benefit population, and the posts are no longer considered public facilities. As a result of this, the counties have... As a result of this, the counties have ceased the practice of funding projects for VFW and American Legion posts, which is kind of a shame. Ray and I are on the Morris County Community Block Grant, and it's not unusual to see these American Legions and these VFWs come in, because they can't afford to putting in a new parking lot, or they need a generator, or they need a new roof. And that's about all they actually ask for, so we're hoping that if enough municipalities, you know, send this to our senators, United States senators and members of the House of Representatives, that we can change that and allow the VFW and the American Legion posts to qualify for that funding.
Any questions? Excellent. I think this is, drives you crazy that things like red tape can be created that forces us to do this. So anyway, this is Resolution one forty-five, and hopefully they'll listen to Washington. Strategic Planning Update.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity to bring you up to date on where we stand with regard to the strategic planning committees and the general effort. It is continuing. Although you haven't heard from any members of these committees for some time, I want to assure you that much work continues to be done, and there's much work that will have to be done in the future. What I'd like to do is just cover the committees very quickly by one at each, one at a time, starting with the Budget Committee. The final report of the committee and its proposed guidelines has already been distributed. It's available on RoseNet, and we can get you a hard copy if you'd like. It's actually, we called it our final report, but more accurately, it's the penultimate report, since there'll be some changes to several aspects of this report, because it depends on information that we got from other committees, and that information in some cases, and I'll touch on it momentarily, is still in process. So as I say, although it's called a final report, it is subject to some changes. The report was not intended to be done in time for this year's budget deliberations, but enough of it was completed so that I think there's general agreement that it helped inform the process this year. And we felt that even in the preliminary state, the guidelines appear to be a definite benefit. So the next step will be to better define how these guidelines can be applied in the future. The issue is to assist in the creation of the annual budget, but still leave room for the council to appropriately exercise its authority over the process. I should be back to the council in the near future with a proposal as to how this could be accomplished. Moreover, this committee will soon be meeting to discuss next steps and possible related subjects for further examination, but one step at a time. So next step, I'll be back with some proposals. As far as the utilities committee is concerned, I will also be asking the council to consider the best way for that committee's recommendations to be applied to our utilities. For example, issues of reliability and pricing were formalized in a way that I personally feel could be beneficial if they became part of the annual process in reviewing the utilities which occurs at budget time. There's one issue that's already the focus of much additional work. You may recall that the committee's conclusion as to how much capital should be allocated to each of the utilities annually was quite different from the calculation of the department heads. Unfortunately, there's no easy way to resolve that issue. The administration took the constructive step of bringing in outside consultants with expertise with both our electric and water utilities to provide their assessment as to the appropriate amount of capital to be allocated annually. Once the results are available, those conclusions, again, should be helpful to this council and other councils as they go through the annual exercise of planning on capital expenditures, both for that year and coming years. The Capital Committee has prepared what arguably has been the most comprehensive accounting of all the borough's assets, with the exception of the utilities, which were appropriately left to that committee. Their work has resulted in the most thoroughgoing and exhaustive listing that anyone can recall having seen, and this listing already has been put to good use in evaluating several departments' operations. The predictions of future capital needs that came out of this study were higher than even our most recent increased capital allocations. To better refine the predictions of future capital needs, the committee has suggested that engineers be added to the committee so that their expertise can be applied to this issue. We're in the process of identifying such people who may be willing to offer up their time as a volunteer. I'm optimistic that if we can accomplish that, we will have available, again, to this council and future councils, an excellent way of calculating how much capital we indeed will need in order to maintain our infrastructure and provide services in a way our residents expect. And then finally, the Operations Committee, which as a result of a survey, which I hope some of you were a part of, and their own deliberations, made a number of very important recommendations as to how the borough can be more effective in informing its residents and promoting interaction between residents and borough officials. The first activity recommended by the committee and approved by the council was to completely redo the RoseNet website. The committee effectively became a focus group, opining on websites of many municipalities and discussing what made some effective and others not so much. After reviewing a significant number of these sites, the committee reached consensus on what they did and didn't like, and fortuitously, the ones we liked were created by relatively few companies. Those companies are being talked to and interviewed, and we hope soon to have an announcement regarding the assignment of this project to an outside company that will redesign RoseNet. I don't want to raise expectations as to when this will be done, I've been involved in these projects before, and there seems to be a pattern regardless of when you said they'll be ready, they're not ready. But I would hope that before the end of the year, we'll at least have a mock-up to show you what it'll look like. And I just want to end by saying that I would like to thank the borough administration and staff for all the work they did in helping these committees do the work they have so far done and continue to work on. And I'd also like to point out for special thanks, Jim Burnett, who assisted Budget, Utilities, and Operations Committees, and Bob Vogel, who assisted the Capital Committee. I also want to thank the many volunteers who gave generously of their time and knowledge to make this effort such a success. In my book, they're the unsung heroes of this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ben? Great work, as you said.
Thank you.
Four to come. All right, ordinance for hearing, can the clerk please read the statement?
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at a regular meeting of the council held Monday, April the twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand and fifteen. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating sixty thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for basketball court lighting replacement at Dodge Field.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-four dash twenty fifteen.
I second it.
Sorry.
Thirty-two, twenty fifteen.
Thirty-two.
No, I'm sorry, it says, in the title, it says thirty-four.
All right.
Thirty-two, it is thirty-two.
I move thirty-two, twenty fifteen.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-two dash twenty fifteen adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance thirty-three, two thousand and fifteen, is ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one sixty-six of the Borough Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks Regarding Outdoor Dining at Business Establishments.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on ordinance thirty-three dash twenty fifteen, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-three dash twenty fifteen.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-three dash twenty fifteen adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we are on to second invitation for discussion. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on anything, may please step forward, again, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? John?
John Hoover, Seventeen Overhill Drive, just one comment if I can please, or question. Mr. Landrigan, in your report, you indicated that the Board of Education budget was over five percent, something like five point one or two percent, and what was told to us at both the forum, it was an informal meeting at the Board of Education, and at the hearing, was that the budget increase was three point eight seven or three point nine percent. And I'm just, and they did, at the forum, we raised that question, we thought it looked like to us it was five point two percent. They said no, and they went back and did a recalculation, and at the hearing said it was three point nine seven percent, and showed us that calculation. I was just curious what the discrepancy is and where we got our numbers from.
Jim? You've got?
Thank you, Mayor. CFO Robert Califfudge has compared levy last year to levy this year, basically, how much we're sending, how much we sent them last year, how much they asked us to send them this year, and that's where the percentage increase came from.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else further comments? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Wednesday, May the twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
And just a reminder on that date, that is, as mentioned, Wednesday because of Memorial Day. I call up ordinances first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance thirty-four, two thousand and fifteen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance eleven, two thousand and fourteen pertaining to the salary ranges for certain non-union full-time employees.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-four dash two thousand and fifteen.
I second it.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five, two thousand and fifteen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing certain affordable housing provisions of chapter one ninety-five of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-five dash twenty fifteen.
Second.
Council discussion. And this will go to Planning Board, and we'll come back for its hearing. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-six, two thousand and fifteen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating twenty-one thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for purchase of a VPI twenty-four port analog recording system for the Madison Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-six, twenty fifteen.
Second.
And this was in the capital budget. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for signalization improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Discussion, again, this was in the capital budget. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Oh, thirty-eight, two thousand, ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand and fifteen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison adapting, adopting a redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, A, dash, one, at second.
Mayor, I move thirty-eight dash twenty fifteen.
I'll second.
This will go to the Planning Board, any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by the certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions are one forty-five dash twenty fifteen to one fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight, yes.
Dash twenty fifteen.
Mayor, I second that.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers.
Okay, vouchers. Public safety, thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars seventy-eight cents. Health and public assistance, five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight, excuse me, public, health and public assistance is five thousand four hundred and thirty-eight, forty-one. Public Works and Engineering, eighty-two thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars twelve cents. Community Affairs, five thousand seven hundred and six dollars twenty-one cents. Finance and Borough Clerk, five million six hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars thirty-one cents. Utilities, eight hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars seventy cents. The total is six million six hundred and forty thousand five hundred and six dollars fifty-three cents.
Mayor, I approve, move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And our new business, I'd like to make the following appointment that does not require council confirmation, that is, to the Planning Board, Thomas Lewis of Fifteen Cross Gates Road, for the unexpired four-year term through December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. And with that?
I move that we adjourn.
Excellent. Thank you all.
And to all a good night.
Yep.
Was this like a power of announcement to that?
Right, yeah. It was a little heavy on the. Yeah, we have to. Not many of my brothers are enough like me, but maybe we could work on a hologram.